...meeting of Gibson County Police Department without a number of orders. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Thank you all for being here today. I'm Sergeant Victor Gibson. This time, I'm going to call the Commissioner, Amy Williams, for your work.
Father God, Lord, we thank you for this day and for how we came alive and were granted. So we lift up Dade County Court, Father, with the recovery efforts. These families that have lost loved ones and those who are waiting for it, knowing that the news probably is not going to be good. So, Father, we lift them up and just pray once again that you would just fill that void with your perfect peace. This is the past, it's all in your statement. Father, we thank you for these commissioners. Lord, we pray for the business we're about to do. And, Lord, we just, once again, even more than what's even better for the county, we just want to make sure that we're doing things in accordance with your will. And it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of United States of America. In this world, for which the saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, the very being and justice for all.
Commissioner Ollman?
Here.
Commissioner Edgar?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Craig? Commissioner Longmire?
Here.
Commissioner Yawway? Commissioner Barker?
Here.
Commissioner Gordon? Commissioner Tug?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Cameron?
Here.
Commissioner Somer?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Knight?
Here.
Commissioner Paul?
Here.
Commissioner Blake?
Here.
Commissioner Haynes?
Here.
Commissioner Beckel?
Here.
Commissioner Melton?
Here.
Commissioner Pell?
Here.
Commissioner Steele?
Here.
Commissioner Landry?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Ray?
Here.
Twenty-two congressional committees absent, we did have four. First order of business is to appoint a replacement. Commissioner Amy Carroll, Gibson County District Attorney. Ms. Debbie, we served on that board for many, many years. She and her husband recently moved out of the county, the county had to step off that board. And before we can thank this department, I just want to publicly thank Ms. Debbie for her dedicated service to the Dusso Board. And I just look back in awe of the many important times over the past eleven years working together. So, thank you so much, Ms. Debbie. I'd like to nominate Ms. Julie Allen for a vowing to fill her shoes and hope for the post. Post made by Mr. Haynes, second by Mr. Ollman. Any discussion? Without all those favor votes, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed likewise. And thank you again, Ms. Debbie, and thank you for being willing to serve. This time, we entertain a motion of three-year budget transfers. We're opposed, opposed made by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Lawson. Any discussion? All those favor votes, say aye.
Aye.
Next order of business is to entertain a motion, here made by Ms. Julie. Post made by Commissioner Longmire, second by Commissioner Steele. All those favor votes, say aye.
Aye.
That's public by my side. This time, I'm going to call Chairman Paul Meyer, discuss the 2122 budget with us. And I want to thank him and his committee for all the hard work of this budget together through these difficult times.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This morning, I'd like to just talk about the highlights of the 2122 budget proposal. But first, I want to thank all the commissioners, department heads, and elected officials who attended our budget meetings. It's a very important step in our process to be able to have the department heads come in, explain their concerns and their needs, and allow the committee to make notes on that. And then we follow up as we meet, the many, many times that we meet between April and today. I want to thank our Finance Director, Jenny Skell, for the great work and effort that she puts into this budget, presenting us with great workbooks at each year, as well as a packet, which you have for you. As you're aware, last year's budget was a repeat budget from the 1920 year due to the pandemic and the inability to safely meet face-to-face and have thorough discussions. Our 2122 budget expenditures were slightly increased this year. And I'll explain some of those increases coming in fiscal year to help everyone understand. Just wanted to add, only disadvantaged today, I guess, maybe an advantage last year with the pandemic and not being able to meet in person, as I was able to sit within steps of the beach in my swimming trunks and present to you our budget in a zoom meeting. So, I didn't get to do that this year, but that's okay. Fortunately, we've seen that our revenues have increased slightly over the last fiscal year as well. The Budget Committee spent several nights reviewing the revenues and adjusting several to more accurate income levels that were previously under rated. After many nights of deliberation and reviewing every department, we're happy to announce that this morning, we're seeking an approval of a balanced budget for surplus for 2122 of eighteen thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents. I think I've done this the eleventh time. And this is the first time we've ever been in the black, so I'm tickled for that. With that said, we are expecting an estimated fund balance for June 30th of 2022 of eleven million four hundred forty-three thousand three hundred and two dollars, which is pretty outstanding. Equivalents to about five and three-quarter months worth of revenue, so... You know, balancing budgets is no small task. And we've asked several departments to reduce some spending in certain line items. I appreciate their willingness and understanding to do that. We've reduced postage costs among several departments, travel, and other line items that we felt, as a budget committee, were not being used over the last several budgets and could be adjusted back to reduce some of the expenditures for the county. In capital projects, we have two big outstanding projects. One is to buy the county a new ambulance. It's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the other is where we set seventy-five thousand dollars in the fire budget to be able to buy additional firefighting equipment. Many departments had changes in their expenditures of less than five thousand dollars. And I'd like to thank all those departments who keep their budget as close to the same annually. To kind of start in on some of the bigger line items, so you'll understand the difference in the budget, Director Foltz brought to us in his budget the interest and the need for ambulance billing software for the county. This was designed to be a more proficient way to do billing and the collection process much easier. We were able to hear not only from Director Foltz, but also from the gentleman that's working with him to help get this contract underway. They made it very clear to us exactly how it works and what it does. We were very intrigued by its ability. And so therefore, the Budget Committee felt that it was important to add this into our budget. The total cost of this is going to run approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Health insurance. We're expecting about a ninety-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollar increase from last year going forward into the new budget. And then I want to jump to the Finance Director's budget, just to let you know that we've increased our data processing line by seven thousand fifty-one dollars. This increase stems from a project that's been in the making for a couple of years. When Director Pell was here, we were trying to implement a new time and attendance system. That system is very close to being ready to roll. And this will provide a lot more data to the county, to the commission of hours worked, vacation, sick leave. So I think there'll be many, many benefits to having this system in place. With full recommendation and vote of the Budget Committee, we adjusted the financial, sorry, our Finance Director's salary back to what it previously was when Director Pell was here as our Finance Director. This will be a merit raise for our director, because she's done a great job and I've been very impressed with her willingness to work. She spends a lot of late hours and after-hours, not on the meeting with us, but as I talked to her last week, she was there after eight-thirty, still working. So, very pleased with the job that she's been up. We appreciate it. With that said, the EMS Committee brought to us a merit raise for our ambulance director. This raise is a six thousand dollar merit raise, which would set his new salary at sixty-six thousand dollars. We worked with the sheriff very closely. He was very willing to take some reductions in his budget. I appreciate that. But he had a lot of needs, and I won't be able to touch on them, but they were important needs. Only you can always vouch when the sheriff brings you a need, it's pretty concerning. The first was his vehicle maintenance line item. The cost of the repair of some of his vehicles today is just getting to be a more expensive thing. I think he gave us an example of a headlight alone in one of their cruisers. It was like a hundred and ninety. Is that correct? About a hundred and ninety bucks just to change the headlight. It's kind of unbelievable. With that said, the Budget Committee approved an additional fifteen thousand dollars in this line item. He shared with us the need to increase the staff in service and development to cover the police academy for the new hires. This increase is going to be an additional ten thousand dollars in that line item. Hopefully, he can get some good officers trained, and the retention on that part will be beneficial with the county as well. One of the biggest things that Sheriff shared with us, that the Budget Committee looked long and hard at, was the fact that the rate of pay had a big offset in it between our road deputies and our correctional officers. The Budget Committee is making a recommendation today to add thirty thousand dollars to the correctional officer's salary line item to start the process of leveling the pay between the road deputies and the correctional officers. This alone, we hope, will help in the retention of our correctional officers. It's a beginning process, and the sheriff's willing to take that amount and try to get started, so... Finally, the biggest increase outside of the ones I've shared with you in the sheriff's budget was the fact that the food cost in the jail is always going to be increasing. He's asked for an additional seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars to be put into that line item, and the Budget Committee agreed to do that as well. So, next, we have our nonprofit charitable contributions. The Budget Committee evaluated all these requests this year that were properly submitted by their requests, their financials, and their audit requirements. The recommendation was made to increase the Humboldt Area Rescue Squad to fourteen thousand dollars as they continue to provide service to this county and our EMS as first responders, providing extrication, search and rescue, water rescue services, and assisting our county fire departments across the county. The non-charitable budget did not change. It's still set at thirty-five thousand dollars. That equivalates to a tenth of a percent of our entire budget. Finally, the Budget Committee is recommending a four percent salary increase to our county employees. This increase stems from last year not being able to offer a cost-of-living adjustment and to show our appreciation and our thinking to our county employees who have continued to work through the difficulties of last year and the pandemic with that same positive attitude that makes our county a great place to live. Our total increase in expenditures from the previous budget to the proposal budget today is six hundred ninety-nine thousand seven, uh, two hundred twenty-seven dollars. Not too bad on a nineteen million dollar budget. Finally, I want to just share some stats with you. Basically, when the Budget Committee takes the revenue value into consideration to determine a budget, we try to run as conservatively as we can. We did increase our number from ninety percent to about ninety-three percent return this year. And I'll tell you that a penny in ninety-three percent equates about eighty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. A penny per Gary, sharing with me last week, is valued at eighty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Just to give you an idea of where that stands from last year, a penny was worth eighty-five thousand dollars. So our county is showing very positive indication of growth and improvements. We're very tempted to see that. This is basically the highlights of our budget. I welcome the commissioners to ask me any questions at this point. But I think we've got a great budget, very pleased with it, very pleased with the hard work that the committee put forth, as well as Director Skell, to provide you the budget we have today. I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
For most questions, I'll yield the floor back to Chairman Wadsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I appreciate your hard work, and Jenny, I appreciate your hard work and all that you put in. But that's not only this, but everything you do, everybody, thank you. And with that said, I'll go with this last question, Mr. Debbie. This time, we entertain a motion, a special reason for resolution. Post made by Commissioner Longmire, second by Commissioner Steele. All those favor votes, say aye. Opposed likewise. We got a lot of resolutions to fill through. It's year-end, most of them are housekeeping measures. If that makes sense, let's get started. Resolution number one. It's a resolution to make appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations in Gibson County, Tennessee for a year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. So here are most of the resolutions. Number one. Post made by Commissioner Blake, second by Commissioner Tug. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call her up.
Commissioner Ollman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgar?
No.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Tug?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
No.
Commissioner Lawson?
No.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckel?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
No.
Commissioner Steele?
No.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Most superiors, thank you. Resolution number ten, a continuing equation, a resolution that I hope that I'm going to need. So this time, we entertain a motion to take the resolution. Post made by Commissioner Longmire, second by Commissioner Wilton. All those favor votes, say aye. Resolution number two, it's taken. Resolution number three is a resolution fixing tax later in Gibson County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1st, 2021. No change from the previous tax rate. We entertain a motion to approve. Resolution three, made by Commissioner Steele, second by Commissioner Longmire. Any discussion? The resolution comes short. Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call her up.
Commissioner Ollman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tug?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckel?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Most superiors, thank you. Resolution number four is a resolution to make appropriations for the various funds, apartments, institutions, offices, and agencies in Gibson County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022. So here are most of the resolutions. Post made by Commissioner Longmire, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? On the resolution four. Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call her up.
Commissioner Ollman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tug?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckel?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes. Most superiors, thank you. Do we have a budget? Make it up. Resolution number five is a resolution to adjust functionalities of line items for one-time purchases from the record preparation spread. That's going to save for Gibson County. Now here are most of the resolutions. Made by Commissioner Lawson, second by Commissioner Longmire. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those favor votes, say aye. Opposed likewise. Most superiors. Resolution number six is a resolution to receive the budget state-of-the-art Gibson County more library. Now here are most of the resolutions. Anybody, Commissioner Blake? Second by Commissioner Steele. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call her up.
Commissioner Ollman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tug?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Most superiors, thank you. Resolution number seven is a resolution to review the county's vision for current management policy as required for the installed grant. Now here are most of the resolutions. Made by Commissioner Tug, second by Commissioner Steele. Any discussion? All those favor votes, say aye. Opposed likewise. Resolution number eight is a resolution to budget funds for drug funds for deemed sheriff vehicles and deemed sheriff's government practice. Now here are most of the resolutions. Made by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Ollman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call her up.
Commissioner Ollman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tug?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckel?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes. Most superiors, thank you. We've got lots of light files to take into account. Lots of the council staff. Light file resolution number one. A resolution to increase park area personnel pay and road fire protection program. Now here are most of the light files. Made by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Steele. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call her up.
Commissioner Ollman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tug?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckel?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Most superiors, thank you. Light file resolution number two is a resolution to increase salary line items for county American, uh, county American extension department.
Commissioner Beckel?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Most superiors, thank you. Light file resolution number three is a resolution to adjust salary line items for multiple departments. Now here are most of the resolutions. Light file number three, made by Commissioner Longmire, second by Commissioner Blake. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call her up.
Commissioner Ollman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tug?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Call?
Yes.
Commissioner Flight?
Yes.
Commissioner Hain?
Yes.
Commissioner McKeon?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Stair?
Yes.
Commissioner Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Chivers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Light file number four is a resolution to increase salary line items for addition to early office. They're motioning light file number four. By Commissioner Owens, seconded by Commissioner Steele. In discussion. Here you go, Madam Park, please call the road.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tubbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Call?
Yes.
Commissioner Flight?
Yes.
Commissioner Hain?
Yes.
Commissioner McKeon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stair?
Yes.
Commissioner Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Chivers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Light file, resolution number five is a resolution to adjust additional funds for all cops and school and police departments. They're motioning light file number five. By Commissioner Owens, seconded by Commissioner Barker. In discussion. Here you go, Madam Park, please call the road.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tubbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Call?
Yes.
Commissioner McKeon?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Stair?
Yes.
Commissioner Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Chivers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Light file number six is a resolution to budget fund for in-service staff development line item of the public safety training program. They're motioning light file number six. By Commissioner Barker, seconded by Commissioner Coe. In discussion. Here you go, Madam Park, please call the road.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tubbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Flight?
Yes.
Commissioner Hain?
Yes.
Commissioner McKeon?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Stair?
Yes.
Commissioner Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Chivers?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Light file number seven is a resolution to increase funds for additional assistance to the county. They're motioning light file number seven. By Commissioner Steele, seconded by Commissioner Coe. In discussion. Here you go, Madam Park, please call the road.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tubbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Call?
Yes.
Commissioner Flight?
Yes.
Commissioner Hain?
Yes.
Commissioner McKeon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stair?
Yes.
Commissioner Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Chivers?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Light file number eight is a resolution to increase funds for the general fund, the capital projects fund, or the purchase of a mental health transfer fee. They're motioning light file number eight. By Commissioner Kimmer, seconded by Commissioner Barker. In discussion. Here you go, Madam Park, please call the road.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tubbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Hain?
Yes.
Commissioner McKeon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stair?
Yes.
Commissioner Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Chivers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Light file number four is a resolution to transfer grants funds for the general fund, the capital projects fund, or the purchase of a mental health transfer fee. They're motioning light file number four. By Commissioner Kimmer, seconded by Commissioner Barker. In discussion. Here you go, Madam Park, please call the road.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?[1380.13]